Father God, thank you for this day. Please watch over us as we make decisions for citizens' point of origin to help us to make wise ones. Watch over our first responders, Lord, and our staff. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal with liberty and justice for all.
From the agenda's approval of our minutes from our March fourteenth meeting, they have been distributed any additions, additions or corrections? If not, we need a motion.
Motion to approve minutes?
We have a motion approved, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign. This motion carries unanimously. Regular business. Resolution twenty-four dash oh six.
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty-four dash oh six. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Winter Garden, Florida declaring results of the general election held on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four for City Commissioner Districts two, three, and four, authorizing issuance of certificates, authorizing a runoff election for District two on April sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Senator Carter. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Resolution twenty-four oh six declares results of the twenty twenty-four general election held March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. This election was for selecting commissioners for Districts two, three, and four. For the record, I'd like to read the results. The seat for City Commissioner, District two, will have a runoff election between qualified candidates, Iliana R. Jones and Ron Mueller, as Danny D.J. Culberson, having fewer votes, was eliminated, and there was no candidate receiving greater than fifty percent of the votes. Based on our charter, city code, and ordinance twenty-three dash sixteen, a runoff election is scheduled for April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. In the race for City Commissioner, District three, Chloe Johnson, at sixty-eight point twelve percent, is duly elected to serve, and as her opponent, Karen McNeil, received only thirty-one point eight eight percent of the votes cast. However, this information is unofficial until the election is completely certified, which is tomorrow, on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, by the Orange County Canvassing Board. In addition, after qualifying in November twenty twenty-three, the seat for City Commissioner, District four, was unopposed, and Colin Charman is duly elected to serve by virtue of no opposition. With that, staff would recommend approval of Resolution twenty-four oh six with an effective date of March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, the date the general election results fully certified, and request authorization to issue certificates of election to the duly elected commissioners for District three and four, and to conduct the runoff election on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, for City Commissioner, District two. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the commission? Hearing done, we need a motion.
Motion to approve, that's the resolution twenty-four dash oh six.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Recommendation to approve purchase order to Corolla Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. A local limit evaluation is required to be developed every time the wastewater treatment facility permit is renewed. The current wastewater treatment facility permit was issued December eighth, eighteenth, excuse me, twenty twenty-three, and this includes this local limit evaluation development requirement. The local limits are this discharge standards that industrial facilities must meet to protect the city's wastewater treatment process. Staff would recommend approving a purchase order to Corolla Engineers, Inc., to develop a local limits evaluation to meet the requirements of the wastewater treatment facility permit in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the commission? Need a motion?
Motion to approve purchase order of Corolla Engine Earring for wastewater treatment facility for sixty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Purchase order of Mead and Hunt? Yes, sir.
Sir, this is a, the existing stormwater infrastructure that discharges to Dr. Bradford Park along Roper Drive its overcapacity during some intense storm events. After modeling the system, a solution has been selected to move into the design phase of the project. The actual construction project will be a separate capital improvement project following this quarter year. Staff would recommend approving a purchase order to Mead and Hunt to produce design drawings for the stormwater collection system on Roper Drive in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the commission?
Well, just thank you. I've been talking with Bob and Mike the mechanic there for quite a while about their problem, and it's very much needed.
Unless you, you, so it's going to leave you the problems. I presume that there's yes response to that.
I don't think you're ever gonna guarantee from an engineer.
Okay, any other questions? We need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And mining lot combination agreement for nine fifty South Millard Street and fifty-one East Morgan. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is a request for site plan approval and lot combination approval to permit the development of the two point one nine acre property located at nine fifty South Dillard and fifty-one East Morgan Street. The applicant is proposing to construct a new two-story, sixteen thousand one hundred forty-seven square foot commercial building along Dillard Street in front of the existing former bank building. The plan proposes to keep the entrance off of Broad Street and move the Dillard Street entrance to East Morgan Street. The new building is designed to provide pedestrian-oriented frontage to Dillard Street. It will have an intricately detailed facade that draws inspiration from the mortgage house files typically found in historic downtown, which staff believes will be a positive change to the area which is only a block northwest Colonial Drive. So with that, staff recommends approval of nine fifty South Dillard Street site plan as well as the lot combination agreement. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the commission?
What businesses are we looking to do?
The businesses that would be permitted in C two typically, so professional office, retail is also permitted, personal services, things of that nature.
Okay, so anything in particular in developer share that's to be determined later?
I believe is to be determined later, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So the mineral portions are gonna be recessed?
Yes, I'm gonna bring up a better.
Yeah, that's right. The one I was concerned about is too, a large rectangular building. We got one or two of those on North Street that are not overly attractive. Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is the same designer direction to the building next door, Mike Morrissey, and he put a lot of detailing, as you can see, a lot of panels, a lot of recesses. They varied the parapet to kind of break up that, that major building mass on the road, so.
Yeah, well, that went through a lot of alterations too, the one next door before we got to where it is.
So, what are you doing with your question?
Yeah, okay.
So, one question, and we got the picture of the finance a little bit better here. It doesn't look like the design really would support like any kind of future, if it was a restaurant or some other kind of business out. Any awnings or outdoor facilities yourself, the way it's located?
This is, this is the view on the street, so they did give a variance to it the closer to the street. There is some area towards the parking lot that they could potentially do it. I'm not sure if they'd have room to do an outdoor cafe. One thing that the applicant did offer to do was, was put some awnings over the entrances, again, to kind of give some more added depth and character, so if that's a condition the commission wants to make, they're open to that.
I would agree with the mayor on that one. I think that would certainly help this stuff.
I would too. Okay. Any other questions?
No, the awnings need to happen there.
It's something.
Yeah, it's way too plain.
Yeah. We need a motion.
Motion to approve the site plan for nine fifty South Dillard Street and fifty-one East Morgan Street.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, with the recommendations to have them come back with some architectural improvements for awnings.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Recommendation for special event? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The Winter Garden Arts Association is requesting to have their annual arts and April VIP fundraiser event on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. The event will begin at City Hall for event passes and refreshments. The second location will be at the Downtown Pavilion, where there'll be live music for the grace of art installations. The third location will be at the Sogo Art Gallery for a live auction and champagne toast, and the fourth and final location will be at the Pilar's Lot for live music, painting and drawing stations, and cocktails. The event will begin at six-thirty PM and run until ten-thirty PM. Tremaine Street between South Highland and South Lakeview will be closed for the duration of the event. Staff recommends approval of the Arts in April event with the listed staff conditions.
Okay. Questions? Need a motion? Still moved? Got a motion approved? We have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now dispense as the City Commission and convene a committee.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, board member, Mr. Capelman, good evening. The city had an opportunity where time was of the essence to purchase and inquire for the property located at eight thirteen East Bay Street, which also sits at northwest corner of East Bay Street and Tenth Street. The purchase of this property was originally approved by the commission back in February eighth, two twenty twenty-four, and was done using the city's general fund. This key parcel will greatly enable the city's streetscape improvement plans for the overall revitalization of the historic East Winter Garden neighborhood, including expansions of the entire right-of-way along Tenth Street from North Street in the north to East Bay Street in the south. With that, staff recommends approval for the reimbursement of the city's general fund by the CRA, the purchase of the property located at eight thirteen East Bay Street in the amount of two thousand, sorry, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
They like the first price.
I know, I think that was both for.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mark, or Mr. Capelman, have you anything?
Just a comment, your CRA advisory board heard the presentation somewhere to this, had an extensive discussion about the, about the property. We want to commend the city for taking quick action because we believe this is gonna enhance a lot the streetscape improvements which, which we're planning for East Winter Garden. We thought it was a very wise move on the city's part, so we would recommend the CRA reimbursing for the purchase of the property.
That is form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we will adjourn to the CRA and recompete as the City Commission. Matters from Citizens of Winter Garden.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, everybody. My name is Noreen Dorkin. I am the editor-in-chief of Box Popula, wintergardenvox.com. So we have a runoff election. I think that's wonderful. I don't think that candidates should be elected to office without standing in front of the community and answering questions from the community. So, I would like to invite both candidates for office to participate in a community forum. I will host. This can be a Zoom conference at your convenience. So, the invitation is to Iliana R. Jones and to Commissioner Romuler. Details to be determined. Please get in touch with me, and we will figure it out. So, you are invited, Ms. Jones, and Commissioner, you are invited. I think the community has every right to question the candidates, so I hope you will participate, and I hope you will participate. We'll do this as a Zoom so that we don't have to worry about finding, finding a space. Let's do this before early voting starts. I hope you'll be there. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, manager from our city attorney. Yes, I'm sorry, sir. No worries.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Wes Hodge. I'm a candidate for Orange County Supervisor of Elections, and I just wanted to share my frustration that there was no foresight to negotiate with the Supervisor of Elections for early voting to be held in the city of Winter Garden. I advocate for equal access and fair access for all voters, and one-third of the voters from the City Council race will not be able to vote in their preferred voting method. So my hope is, moving forward, when you negotiate these deals with the Supervisor of Elections, you include having early voting space here in the city of Winter Garden for the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Was he, correct, to five twelve North Lakeview Avenue, Winter Garden, was the gentleman res, talking about no early voting for the runoff election?
There's early voting.
Because in the general election, we had places for the city.
But for the runoff, we do not, we have.
Okay. Well, 'cause I, he didn't say, I did not hear him say for the runoff.
There's nothing inside the city limits of Winter Garden.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you. I wanted to be clear.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, Senator attorney.
I follow a whole lot of things, Mayor. Follow up, sir.
Thank you. Same manager.
I just want to let everybody know that bidding for Tucker was actually advertised in the Orange County Sentinel today, so it's officially open. So we're looking for pre-bid meetings around April twelve, or with bids middle sometime in the back. And lastly, most important, I wish everybody a happy Easter.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
My prepared statement tonight, and since it's in writing, I'll bridge the clerk for records. I appreciate our mayor taking the time last meeting to address the falsehood shared by Ron Mueller. I felt that I needed to go on record as well, that what has been said about me and the mayor taking money from the Ramos family in exchange for endorsement is a made-up lie. I have not taken money from the Ramos family or anyone else for any endorsement I've ever given a candidate. My endorsement of Elian, Iliana Ramos Jones is because I feel she's the best person for the job and I care about my city. I also believe there's something seriously wrong with Ron's character, that he has proven through his words and actions, and that he should not be in this position. Lies to injure my reputation are slanderous, libelous because they've been put in writing in interviews, as well as defamation. If I had disposable income right now, I would sue, but since I don't, I do want to make this statement for the record. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Commissioner Mueller?
Two things, or three things, I'll read statements as well. Before that, certainly thank the city manager for moving Tucker Ranch along. Thank you very much. I'm glad to see that happening. And to Director Cash, thank you. I know you reached out to one of our residents in Oak Park on curb cut for handicap access. Thank you very much for helping that young man. It's appreciated. And same as Commissioner Bennett here, I'll refer a statement here, and I'll hand that to the city clerk at the end of this.
The job of a commissioner is to legislate by knowing the community and working in its common interest, seeing the here and now, as well as creating a vision of the future for this generation and the many to come. Our efforts must be driven for the love of others, not ourselves. In fact, being a commissioner means laying one's ego at the doorstep of City Hall and being guided over what is right for the whole, not the individual. During the chamber meeting on March fourteenth, we deviated from that principle. We put the politics of the office before the business of the office. To those who were present or later came to know of these proceedings, I extend my heart with apologies. We failed to uphold the sacred trust you place in us, expecting that we, as your leaders, would prioritize your well-being above everything else. The intrusion of personal and political interest in this space met for public service serves as a reminder that this chamber is also a place of learning, growth, and forgiveness. Despite our best intentions, we are all imperfect beings, prone to mistakes. We will stumble, we will fall, and we most assuredly will fail. But we must embrace those failures as much as our successes. Only together can we stand tall, be better from our experiences, and find forgiveness for one another through our unity, strength, and acceptance. Let the events of March fourteenth serve as a lesson to us all. We are here to serve you, the people of Winter Garden, not ourselves. Beginning today, let's redress, redirect our focus solely to the work of making Winter Garden a better place for us all. Let us cultivate forgiveness in our hearts, aiming not to tear down, but to uplift and build a stronger, more united community. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
Well, I'm trying to go on a high note, since this is my last meeting. I did want to bring up a, a couple of things, time is still processing some of this stuff. Anyway, something I witnessed last week, and it was, it's kind of an honor, actually, especially since this is my last meeting, to be able to tell this story, because it really, it really stuck with me. You may have heard, we've got some residents being displaced in East Winter Garden. We've got an employee named Ebony Harris. She's a neighborhood coordinator, and she's been working in East Winter Garden, works very closely with Officer McCloud of Community Policing, and she's got her finger on the pulse of East Winter Garden right now. So she was down there working with some of these residents, getting them other places to stay. By the way, we have, we have places for all these people that are being displaced to stay. And while she was there, she was not only getting them housing, but she was also getting food stamps, she was bringing in second harvest, coalition for the homeless, she got driver's license reissued to these guys, social security cards where they were lacking. So she was really down there, but that's not the main part of the story, although it was a pretty big one. While we were standing there working with some of these gentlemen, another gentleman walked by. This guy was obviously in distress, and it was pretty obvious he had just gotten discharged from some sort of county or state facility. Ebony immediately recognized the gentleman, said, hold on, everybody, walked right over to him, started talking to him, then came back and asked Officer McCloud just to go over there and, and talk to him, kind of keep him, keep him there so he wouldn't kind of disappear into the neighborhood, and then she couldn't help him. So Officer McCloud walked over, started joking with him, laughing, just talking to him. While he was doing that, Ebony was on the phone with Aspire. If everybody's familiar with Aspire, they're another social service agency we have in contract with the police department. They respond with the police sometimes if we know we have social issues or that are going on, and things that, you know, maybe the police just aren't equipped to handle. She got on the phone with Aspire. Aspire was there in ten minutes, so we had three agencies there within ten minutes helping this gentleman. Aspire eventually got a hold of some doctors, got him the medication that he needed. It was immediate, and it was really impressive and actually a little emotional to actually see these guys in action, doing their job and doing what they do every day. I think we've really crossed the threshold. I know we've got a lot of work to do. I know we've got a lot of things that we're still missing in East Winter Garden, but we've crossed the threshold down there with the resource center with people like Ebony and Officer McCloud and Aspire. I wanted to thank the city manager, Chief Graham, for the resources you've offered down there. Winter Garden is putting in the work down there, and I just thought that was a good story to tell. Please thank the people that are involved, and tell them what a great job you've done. It's pretty impressive. So, being my last meeting, I think it'd be revisive if I didn't thank a few people before I, before I left, because I'm sure I owe a lot of thanks to, to a lot of people. First, I wanted to congratulate Chloe Johnson in winning. I think she ran a great race. Karen, I think you ran, ran a great race also. I hope you're gonna stay involved, and I hope you're gonna work together. I think the city will be better for it. So, one thing I realized about being a commissioner is, that's a hard job, and I realized how thin-skinned I am in taking criticism. I spent thirty-two years in the military, I've been involved in businesses, but, you know, I can charge head, charge ahead, take charge, but this is the job that keeps me up at night. It really is amazing, and I started thinking about it as I came to the end of this, and by the way, I've been up here on this diet, it's probably twenty years between P and Z and commission. So it made me think a lot. When we deal with folks in the, in Winter Garden as commissioners, it's not about potholes and streetlights and things like that, which is what I thought it was. It's about people. It's about real problems that real people have, things like generational wealth, affordable housing, gangs, COVID, deeply, deeply important stuff, and I hope this commission always remembers that, and I'm sure they will. I gotta bring up COVID because that was probably one of the more memorable moments. I remember talking to some people in East Winter Garden, and I realized we were probably on the precipice of a humanitarian crisis. You know, things had gone bad down, and we had people living post proximity. The food pantry was shut down, the food deliveries weren't being made. I called a couple of pastors, and I called Mike Ball for the then-city manager, told him what was going on. That night, staff was on the phone ordering food from Amazon, cases of food. And if you remember, this whole chambers was filled, was a food pantry, and we were making deliveries. It wasn't perfect, we were trying to get our list down of who needed help, but we jumped into actions, and I don't know a lot of cities that did that, so I thought that bore me pity. As I said, this is the job that's gonna stay with me, and I'm gonna be up at night thinking, what did I miss? What could we have done better? But just allow me to thank a few people, and I promise I'll make this quick. To my fellow commissioners, as I mentioned, being a commissioner is really hard, and, you know, I have the type of job in my civilian life where I actually go in front of all the city commissions and councils, and I get to present projects and things, and I can tell you, they do not have the synergy and civility that we have. They don't get the things done that we do in this city, so we really should be thankful for the commission that we have, and I really do hope that we are gonna work through our issues and block out the liberal noise that has been just diverting us a little bit the last couple of years. I want to thank you for all the approvals that you've given to me and to District three. I started counting up all the East Winter Garden programs, the budgets, the purchases, the projects. I stopped counting at a hundred and twelve. Those are all the motions that were made, and every one of them was unanimous. So I just want to, thought that really was significant, and I want to thank you for all those votes and what you did. You know, I try to remind myself that you can really accomplish a lot if you're not looking to take credit for it, and this commission really does epitomize that statement. So thank you again for all your years of service, and I know you'll do good by the city. I want to thank staff, because I really think they're the rock stars in this, in this whole thing. I would really love to thank each and every staff member. I mean, it really is incredible what they do, and the amount of respect that I have for you. You wouldn't be doing this job unless it was called, because I know that's what it is for you. It is amazing what you do every day. I need to name a few people that I've really had the privilege of working, working closely with, and I just do this really fast. Kurt, Steve, Kelly, Ed, Chief Graham, Mark, Tanya, Chief Gainsa, Laura, Frank, Jim, Eric, David, Jim, Amy, Radisha, Bob Buchanan, who said he out there. Just working with all you guys has been one of the honors of my life, so thank you very, very much. You made my job easy. It was my job to be the voice of District three, but I realized there was a great city manager and a great city staff making it happen. And really, when I figured out that if I just let them do their job, they'd probably do it a lot better than I do, so I just stayed out of their way. Took me a while to realize that, because they're the professionals. They're the one with the degrees, they're the one who's been doing this for so long. They're very, very good at what they do, so we really just need to let them do their job. We all remember the disparaging nicknames for Winter Garden, I won't even say what they were when I first got here over twenty years ago. They're a distant memory now, and that's really because staff put in the work to get that, get that done. It really is incredible. Angie, I call Angie the consigulary. Two words for Angie, class and grace. I really do appreciate everything you've done for me and your kind words. You're really the wizard behind the curtain for this commission, making sure everything runs smoothly. I just can't thank you enough, and I really will miss you a lot. The residents, three terms of support. Wish Miss Wilder was here. Really wanted to thank Miss Wilder, she's got the voice in my head for a lot of this stuff, but I'll make sure I thank her personally. John Williams, I want to thank you and I want to apologize at the same time. John, John has a pretty good ride home, and he must have dreaded getting in his car at night, because he knew Major was gonna call him, and just, just grime him about all the things that are going on in the city. And he was kind, and he gave me counsel, and gave me advice, and very gracious with his time, and I will never forget that. All the actions that you took when I would get manic over certain issues, I really felt like I was in good hands when I was talking to John, and it meant a lot to me, John, so thank you. Keep up the great work, we're lucky to have you, and you are a class act, I really appreciate it. Mayor, Mayor John Reese, I could say a whole bunch of things, but I'll sum it up by saying this. thoughtfulness and dignity, John's name comes to mind, so I want to thank you, Mayor, for everything you've done over the council for the years. Last but not least, my wife, Justine, she couldn't be here, she's taking care of an issue for me with a family issue up north, but she provided all the balance to my decisions, and I couldn't have done it without her support. So thank you all. I know the city is going to continue to thrive, that I have no doubt. I truly hope you'll honor me by letting me help stay involved with some of the things and continuing to serve the city, because I'm not going anywhere. I really will miss you all, and I'm very, very confident District 3 is going to be very good hands in one of the ways. So thank you very much. Thanks for encouraging me, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Sherman?
How do you follow that? I'm going to keep it really light. Mark, I don't think you're going to have trouble sleeping. So, I buy everything else on that, but I think you're going to sleep great. You might want to miss what's going on, but I think you're sleeping great. Also, with you leaving and Chloe coming on, you've taken my oxymoron that I've had since 2005 of, well, I was the youngest commissioner up until Chloe gets signed in, but now, tonight, I'm the youngest and the longest-serving commissioner. Doesn't count me, not as mayor.
You're the oldest.
And I'm going to be there one day too, but I can't wait to have some conversations with you now that you're not going to be a commissioner. It's going to, we're going to have some interesting chats. Wish you well, and I'm sure we'll be in touch. Thanks, Mark, appreciate your service. Yeah. That's it. I'm keeping it light.
Yep. Ron, what you read was really good, so I'm going to take it with that, and you have to realize that you started this when you squatted in the Observer and said basically that I and Lisa Bennett were doing this for financial gains. All this would not have started or happened if you hadn't said that. So I'm going to assume tonight, you're either going to present evidence on that, or you're going to admit that that's a false statement? Does that bother me? And I think you should do one or the other. You talk about unity so much, but you've accused this entire city commission of doing things, you know, for greed. You've taken a credit for the stat, but you keep talking about unity, so follow through with that. Once again, you went to the Observer and said I defamed you. I didn't defame you, I just took what you said, came to City Hall, went to public records and looked up the right answers for all those things. It wasn't defamation, it was putting the correct answers with the statements that you had put out in public. If anything, I thought, and I didn't use the word "defame" for me, I just thought you, what you said about me was incorrect. And I did acknowledge that we, in the opening comments, when I read your statement, that right there clarified that I was backing Ellyana. So, I guess I wish instead of going home, typing out emails, typing out stuff on social media, videoing yourself and making remarks, that you would just get it out in the open here and we can talk about it, because I don't do that. I have not seen, I have one thing, I sure wouldn't video myself, you know, talking. So I guess that, that just what bothers me, so I wish you would at least admit that this is not a true statement. You know, I've got family in this town, we've grown up in this town, and that really bothers me, of not taking a penny from anyone from my entire life.
If my words offended you, if my choice of words were poor, then I apologize for them to you, sir. They were not meant to defend your good character, nor your many years of service here, sir. So I will resolutely apologize to you if I have offended you.
Why not me?
Just a minute. That goes for you as well.
Thank you.
I did not mean to...
I want to get to it.
General apology is fully extended to you, ma'am.
But Ron, were they, were they true? You have proof that that, those things were true.
I don't believe, as I said earlier, this is deformed, this body.
But, but the videos...
But if we want to have this discussion outside of this chamber, I am open for that.
That's a sunshine law. We don't, you can't do this, it's sunshine law, Ron. And I'm not going to call the Observer up or someone else and board out things, I just don't do that.
The accusations were in the public.
Yeah, this, this is sunshine law. We can't go behind closed doors and talk about these things. It's against the law. So anyway, we're not going anywhere with this, so I want to get to the point, and I want to talk about the al conditioning nation of who, you know, he was for. I don't know if District 3 really appreciates, and I'm sure they do, but all that he has done for District 3. He has worked tirelessly, I think, for, for District 3, and everything he could do, he has done, I mean, he's put in the time, he's put in his money, he's put in his efforts, he has worked hard for District 3, but not just the district, for the city of Winter Garden. I've learned a lot sitting here, listening to him. If you've noticed, Mark is calm and thinks through things, brings a lot of knowledge and wisdom to this commission. Chloe, we're glad she's going to be here, and we are going to miss Mark and all that too, so, and I truly understand what you said about your wife, because if your wife isn't behind you, you can forget it.
Or your spouse.
So anyway, we're going to miss you, and we hope the best, and we heard you say you're going to volunteer and ready to work, so we'll have you start a month. So thank you. We will enjoy it.